Counsel's no cold order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm able to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carried. Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I feel like I had one and I can't remember.
It's pretty clear.
Um, just on page nine, just with the Lee's Refrigeration Ice Machine for the auditorium. We pretty much got all new ice machines now, or?
No.
Seems like we're seeing them. I just, I've seen it pop up a lot over the coolers and ice machines and stuff.
That is the ice machine for the auditorium, and then it was repaired and then now they replaced it.
So that, and that's the thing I was gonna ask about. So how long ago did he repair it?
Couple months ago, and then it was unreparable.
Okay. So, and I noticed that with the last couple times too, that they were repaired and then shortly thereafter, we ended up buying another one after that. So I'm just wondering if they're missing something when they're repairing these, or you know what I mean, that just shortly thereafter, we're buying new ones after paying to repair them?
The hope that an attempt could be made to repair them and they keep going, but it was a lost cause.
Okay. Lee's has to like us at this point, I would imagine.
Well, you shouldn't never think everything's new now.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was thinking at this point. I think that was my only one.
Does anyone have anything else? Not? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion passed. Is there anybody for a public comment? If not, we're moving along tonight. First department business is Public Works.
Alright, if you remember last week, last month, we had Schwickert's do our roof reports.
In your own page, uh...
Nineteen. Yep, and, um, our big, you know, we had a concern about this building. Forshear came out, looked it over. All the estimates for, all Schwickert's reports for their fixing is on the old part of the roof that hasn't been replaced. And Forshear's gonna give us a bid for them repairs, and there is a few issues on the new part for warranty that he's checking over. He's gonna get back with us on all that. He's also given us some bids on, on the liquor store roof. It's gonna need a lot more work than the, than Schwickert's came up with. That roof is rusting through. And Forshear has a, a way to fix what they, they were gonna fix with the caulking and the screws, and then they spray the whole roof with like a white. He's gonna get us bids on that too.
So...
And the fire hall and our other buildings.
What's with the fire hall?
Just what, whatever Schwickert's looked at and gave us an estimate on, Forshear's looking at the same thing. That way we have more than one bid, and it's from a local contractor that we have used in the past.
So I mean, the Schwickert's, they do a lot of stuff here. Why, why is there such a discrepancy between what they came up with and...
Well, if you dig into that roof, I was here that day that Marty came and he said that roof should be really addressed majorly, 'cause it's, it's starting to rust through in spots, especially around the vents and stuff. Like, like we looked, we talked about earlier, that building gonna need to be painted soon if we wanna save it. That's in the works, I hope, to get some bids on that. You, you've been to liquor stores. You see how it's rusting. Well, the roof is doing the same thing.
Right. What, what I'm saying is how thorough are they being if they completely missed all this?
Well, they didn't miss it. They, they have it on there. They have their, "Should be fixed today, should be fixed in the future." And that's a future one, but it's one that we probably wanna look at a little sooner than later, before it gets, go up there and stick your fingers through the tin. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Uh, Marty's getting us a bid on that, along with the other, pretty much everything that they gave us a bid on, he's looking at.
How do we get a bid on replacing the roof?
We can get that too. I can have Dale check on that. And then, um, cost estimates for the maintenance shop to remove them old hanging heaters that are through the roof and leaking. He's, Dale's getting bids on them. And he's getting a bid to remove that old chimney if we do replace the heater in his Far Bay, because that's just another leak, you know, it leaks and the ceilings are wet there. So he's gonna have a bid on that. He's working on the budgets. Fire hall roof. Pool is closing August 30th. It'll be done. He's looking at some bids on some equipment upgrades for a, a new plow for his one ton and a used push bar for his payloader. Um, Jared's taking a CDL test, getting that taken care of so he can drive the big truck. Um, they got a tree trimming coat for Down by the Lake by Cedar Crest, all along the path in the park there. And it was for, from, um, McTree. They've been doing a lot of work in town and, for us. And they came in at thirteen hundred and eighty dollars to clean up, I believe, that whole shoreline, wasn't it?
Yes.
The whole shoreline along Cedar Crest. They were here earlier and took a few out that had fallen and they were a safety hazard. And, uh...
Quick question about the, how are we doing with the, the trees and stuff growing out of the riprap out at the ponds? Are they, is that good now after the last, after everything was taken care of and it never came back this year?
And everything's good?
Okay, awesome.
Is this the same guy that did that?
Nope.
That was Reiner?
Reiner did all the pond work. And McTree's, they did all of our earlier spring work up on Frank, and they did a bunch of work in the park for the lions. They did all them trees and, and, uh, they came up with that bid. I don't know if we wanna push that through or check, do we want, or do you want more bids? It, it needs to be done. It's, it's a freaking mess down there along that lake.
How much is it?
Thirteen eighty. Um, yeah. Do we wanna get them on the, get on the list, because they are very busy and booking fast? I guess that's a question to hand.
I would think so, I mean.
I would think so.
Our first budget will handle it.
Well, I think we got a donation to cover that.
And they, I, the way I talked to them a little bit too, they were gonna, you know, a lot of them spots, when you walk along there, you can't even see the lake. Weren't they gonna brush that up and clean it up? So when you're walking along there, you can, you can see the lake and, and, you know, enjoy that view while you're walking that path.
Kinda like we did before.
It's overgrown.
Respectfully too, if these are things that are park issues, could you guys just bring me in on it too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
What I'm saying is, is the city doesn't have to pay for this. We still have some small donations left from when we did it. So let's figure it will be done. As long as the city approves getting it done, there'll be no cost to the city. So let's make a...
Okay. I make a motion to accept MC Tree Service bid for thirteen eighty that the city, and the city doesn't have to pay for it. There's donation money for this, for thirteen hundred and eighty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carried.
And then they, he's getting some bids, um, for that manhole repair on East and Frank. It's that very last house on East. He's redoing his whole driveway and he's replacing all the gutter in front of his house. And there's a manhole there that's pushed up really high, so Dale's gonna get estimate on that. And then there's a short piece of curb that goes into the swamp that's not there. It's just a dirt trail. And Dale's gonna have an estimate on that, because that'll probably alleviate, if we put that in. It'll alleviate a lot of that water pressure right on that corner that is causing that, um, manhole to deteriorate like it is in that corner. It's, it's, it's just horrible down in that corner. So he's gonna come up with some estimates on that. It's probably gonna be fifty dollars a foot for the curb. That's about the going rate. It's about thirty-six feet, so it'd be about eighteen hundred on that. And he's gonna get the rest for the manhole repair. And I guess people services reports are all in line, I would say. I mean, there's nothing crazy. We haven't had any rain, so, but we are still pumping water. I mean, if you wanna detail these and watch these, a lot of that, I think, is some sprinklers they'll go into that our water pumped up is up, but... And that's, I think, about it for Public Works. Not any questions?
One thing I did notice when I was going through the, I wonder if this isn't for our ceiling and city hall is always leaking?
All that flashing around that ridge?
I'm not a pro for that.
Right, right.
Jumped out at you like, what?
I guess, I guess we should bring this up. Should we have Dale?
I think, I think the majority of the reason that roof is leaking is ice downs. 'Cause it, it never leaks in the summer, does it? No.
I was thinking we'll get Marty's Forshear roofing estimates on the rest of this, and then go through all these and figure out which ones we wanna have done and who's gonna do them, because it's kinda unfair to say, oh, let's get Schwickert's to do that one and let's wait for Marty on that one. That way, next meeting, we can have everything figured out and maybe...
Be nice if it's...
Be ready. Yeah, before winter flies.
Anything else?
That's it on there, unless Dale's got anything else. If you want that, you can have it.
People Services, maybe won't be coming in with a proposal for a pump replacement down at the Cleveland station. They're having trouble with one of those pumps down there again. Can't get parts for it. They don't make that company's out of existence. So they're looking around. They've been pricing, looking maybe for a used rebuilt pump to put in there in the interim if the Cleveland station, RDA project flies. They're sticking a ten thousand dollars into something that's gonna be there for three years.
Were those the ones that were just serviced too?
Yep.
They were just serviced. What are the issues with them now?
Now it's just, uh, it keeps kicking a barrier, kicking the breakers out, and they're right after, try rewinding it and it don't work. And Wade Lee told me they wanted to get an order for it. You can't get them over.
So when they do these inspections on them, are they checking them for, or they just, they're just doing the drop and, I mean, they're not looking for any electrical issues in them when they're inspecting them?
Well, when they do them, they just, you know, draw it out and, you know, see how many amps they're pulling and stuff. They pass. Just like they've been in there for twenty-seven years, or they're rebuilt.
Right.
They just both rebuilt, from that electrical mess up?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They just rebuilt and serviced. Do you think that somewhere along the line, somebody would've noticed something?
Yeah, that, that's...
I don't know. I know that Lee, he's gonna come to the next meeting and...
Explain?
Maybe ask more of them.
Okay.
I guess I'm gonna go back to that. I'm looking at the, uh, water and the wastewater. You know, it looks like it's probably about fifteen thousand gallons a month. It looks like it's about seventy thousand pumped and eighty, I'm just, there's not a number there. I'm just using eighty-five, 'cause it's under a hundred. You know what I'm saying?
For June?
For, for it being pumped. So it's worth about fifteen thousand gallons more a day pumped than... I can't, I find it hard to believe there much be, would be much IONI right now.
IONI?
Infiltration. I mean, with, being it's so dry and it's not raining, I'm surprised it's not closer, 'cause it's almost the same. What I'm trying to get at is where the, the fifteen thousand gallons a day that's getting pumped for wastewater more than the, the water pumped.
Well, there's, I think there's still a lot of them going...
Yeah, but it's not much different than when you look at it from the other years, even with a dry year. It's still that same difference.
Yeah, it, well, no. I mean, not from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty or twenty-one, there's a huge difference in that year. And, and obviously, they don't have that represented here, but there was quite a difference from two thousand nineteen, if I remember correctly, and I, I do believe that there was substantial difference then, and, and even so in two thousand eighteen.
But I mean, fifteen thousand gallons a day in a dry year seems pretty weird.
As far as extra water being in there?
Well, you're pumping, you're pumping wastewater, you're pumping, uh, water.
Right, even still at lake level though. I know houses that are over here on this end of town that their sumps are going all the time. And some of those sumps, some of those sumps are, they do have drains going into people's sewers, whether they tell you or not. Not sanitary. Whether they tell you or not, they are. Yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, but mine goes to the swamp.
I'm not putting you on the spot or anything.
Mine goes to the swamp and then back to my basement.
I'm just saying, no, there are.
Yep, I know. I know that. You know that. There's gotta be coming from somewhere.
Yeah, it's weird.
Maybe it's like that tile they found on Grove Avenue. Looked like it was connected right to the swamp.
Somewhere along the lines, there's stuff tied in there.
There's all kinds of stuff tied in there.
Oh, yeah. I just figured it would be probably closer with a dry year. Okay, anything else on Public Works?
But if you look at July twenty twenty, was lower than twenty twenty-one.
That's water.
Wastewater pumped.
The wastewater?
Yeah. Twenty twenty-one...
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't make any sense.
That, that's strange for July. Twenty twenty-one is almost at a hundred thousand, and twenty twenty was at, I would call that eighty. Right, yeah.
Yeah, seems weird. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to, uh, Public Safety.
So we'll go to the fire department first. We've got the reports there. I'll just read it. It's, it's short. And then I'll ask Dale about his busy month, but City of Silver Lake was seven medicals, Ridge Valley Fire, one fire, hail, um, Township was one fire and two mutual aids, structure fire in Hutchinson. Dale, you had a busy month with Polucheski Days and everything else. Is there anything you wanna talk about?
No, everything was good. We didn't have to be first responders called during Polucheski Days or anything like that. Two mutual aids was mostly hauling water to Hutchinson for a structure fire that they had, discovering one out there. And other than that, it's been medicals. And it's been actually sold that way too, so.
That's good news.
Okay. Short list is good on, on the fire department.
That's great.
We're starting to get more and more in-house training again now, boosting us to coordinate, so. And then a house burn was a great success.
They can't hear you if we're gonna...
Oh, okay. Um, the, uh, house burn that we had last month was a great success. The house burn that we had was a great success. We had about, uh, three fourths of our department go through, and then we had some, uh, trainees that took the ten oh one and one oh, ten oh two class through SACS. They also went through it and went really well, uh, got to accomplish what we wanted to do, so. We've got the four young guys and a few other older people looking at starting a EMR class through Waconia Hospital in January. So we'll be picking up four more first responders if they complete their classes, and hopefully another three of the existing firefighters that aren't EMRs right now. So we'll be picking up seven new EMRs.
Impressive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Krista, did you text Steve?
I did.
Okay, you did. Okay, I thought she said, Eric, he said Krista was. Then we've got the, um...
He might have.
The McLeod County Sheriff's Department report here. Um, it's all, you know, right out there. What did they add? Hundred ninety-three hours was Polucheski Days in there, right?
Yep, yep.
So they've been close to forty hours a week?
Well, if you got the twenty and twenty, right down there is twenty and twenty, those two days.
Yeah, well, that was, that was Polucheski, right?
Right.
Yep. So they've been close to forty hours a week, other than Polucheski Days than they were.
Right, and then this month is supposed to, February, September, they said they'd get us to fifty, what they promised.
Yep. And the ambulance, uh, waiting for Steve to get in. I don't know how you wanna do that.
What, do you have anything on your report?
I don't have anything.
You're up, Steve.
Steve, I didn't get an ambulance report from you, so you got it. Floor's yours. I said I didn't get an ambulance report, so.
Tap it on, Steve.
So the floor is yours.
Okay, um... I don't have a lot for you. We, uh, I just was contacted today that two of the students are almost done. Oh, I guess it's him. Uh, two of the students are almost done at Crown and, and their schedule and their national. And then Noah just passed his national, and he drove all the way up to Fargo, 'cause it was like a two-month wait if he took it in Minnesota, but they had an opening in North Dakota, so he drove to Fargo, took it and passed.
Okay.
So, uh, he's fully qualified and, and gaining experience, so that would be, he's number, I think he's number four now of, uh, out of the ten. He's number four for EMTs out of the ten that we hired that got it done. Two other ones got a pass theirs yet, and then, then the other two do. And then we got four, or three EMRs still that are transitioning. So everything's humming along real good. Uh, did a few interviews and, and trying to work on the, getting a couple more. So, and then I didn't get the paperwork turned in on doing an assistant chief, but we'll try to have that wrapped up by next month, so, to turn in for council approval.
Perfect.
So, other than that, made some decent money on the parade with the fundraisers.
Did you? Good.
Yeah, I think, uh, about two hundred and eighty. And, and then, uh, I think we might have another grant coming too, but I, I gotta get the details.
Awesome.
So that's about it.
So are we thinking some of these new people are gonna help you guys on them day shifts too?
Oh, yeah, that's been working real well. So, yeah, Connor, in two weeks, he goes back to school, but then Jake will be easing up for his, Jake's job, he's kinda like in youth ministry, and he gets real busy in the summer, and that's when Connor comes home from college. And then Connor works our day shift. And then when Connor goes back to college, up in, I think, Amity or somewhere, then Jake will be done and he'll come back. And he's almost done with his school to transition from EMR to EMT. And then Veronica and Noah cover. So we've been fairly full on the day shift now. Uh, we haven't needed, uh, we haven't needed a liner to cover us for about six months now. We've been fully, full schedule.
That's great.
And then we've probably covered for them quite a bit.
Good.
Good to know.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Anything else on Public Safety? Any other questions? Not, we're gonna move on to the liquor store. You're up.
Okay. So included in our packet is a request for council action to approve the hiring of a new liquor store manager. Do we want to go through the other things quick first before we...
Yeah, why don't we go through, yeah, go through your report?
Um, hey, so we've been working, Carissa's been doing a lot, working on getting procedures and policies, uh, in place, enforced with the current staff. There are still shifts that remain open on the schedule for the remainder of August, and if they were not covered, if they're not covered, it will cause the liquor store to close. If you, as you guys have already seen, it's been closed down a couple of times. Um, and then training in a backup to do the morning opening procedures while Carissa is in, is on vacation. So, um, hopefully you looked at it again. Um, there was a profit.
Well, we're, I guess, um, I was looking at this, that the professional fees are so much higher this month than last year on this day.
It's for the twenty twenty audit.
It just got pushed into this month?
It just, it just got paid in July.
And there's a lot more miscellaneous, things like that? Okay.
So as far as the not being able to fill the schedules and stuff, is that, are people just quitting? Are they not being able to sign off, or...
Availability for the current staff is a lot of it. Um, like this Friday and Saturday, if our lead bartender isn't back to work, there won't be anybody to work on Friday or Saturday night this weekend.
So, do you feel like it's, excuse me, fully staffed, just the staff that's there just isn't working? Is that the problem we're running into? Because I just feel like over the course of the last couple of years, we trained a lot of people at that bar, and I just wonder where they're all at. I, I remember just constantly okaying the approval to hire this one, this one, this one. Where are all of them? I don't understand.
Well, some of them are gone already.
Okay.
And, um, it's a little bit of oaths, to answer your question. Um, and we have one bartender right now that is nineteen, who would, could work by himself, but can't, you know, 'cause of our city policy. So he's been working day shifts, just doing miscellaneous things that I've needed him to do in the, in the interim, but I can't have him working by himself at night, so.
So are we, or how are we trying to solicit help? I haven't seen anything in any papers or anything.
We just advertise on Facebook. It's generally where we've been advertising for all of our, um, applicants. We've never had, we've never had a great success in the last couple of years by advertising in the paper.
Well, I'm just saying, is it, it's something simple. I mean, it sounds kinda simple, but, I mean, hanging a sign outside, hiring or something?
There is signs hanging in the building.
Is it noticeable? I haven't seen it.
It's, as far as staff, how many people are staffed? How many, how many are employed?
What do we have, six or seven? Seven.
Gotta take your shoes off?
So I'm gonna throw an idea out there that, and I'm sure I'm gonna get laughed out of here, browbeat right away, but, um, that COVID money that just came, and I was reading through what it can be used for. And one of the things that it seems to me like it could be used for would be sign-on bonuses or incentives, if you read through some of that COVID money. And I think that that's something that could benefit the bar. Just gonna throw that out there, but I'm not exactly sure what page it was on, but I wrote it down.
I know I was reading that too.
I think that that's something that could benefit to try to get some people there, otherwise we're gonna, I mean, gonna be closing it down all the time. So I just wanna throw that out there for everybody. It seemed like that that was possible in that COVID money.
I mean, I definitely think we need, we maybe need to evaluate the operating hours. You know, we could definitely probably cut back on some of that. Um, I don't know.
Do you think that, that hiring this new manager will help in that regard too?
Well, if we have a full-time manager and a full-time lead bartender, a lot of the gaps in the schedule obviously would be filled by those two positions. You know, we're just going through some growing pains right now and trying to just maintain until we are fully staffed.
Hopefully in the next thirty days.
Hire Owen Clinker as municipal liquor store manager at step five on the pay scale at four, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, pending background check and drug test.
Is this a person that's already been working there, or not?
No.
So why don't you kinda fill everybody in on this gentleman?
No, well, I can, if you want to.
I'd prefer if you, I wanna say something and, and, um...
No, just like generally where he's from, things like that.
Okay, so currently Owen is working for the Silver, Silver Bay Municipal Liquor Store. And he has been the full-time bartender up there for six years and three years as the backup manager for, um, their current manager that they have. He has experience in inventory control, cycle counting, scheduling, um, you know, obviously working behind the bar. Um, so management experience, marketing with, um, campgrounds and snowmobile trails, among other...
He had very creative marketing.
Yeah, among other, um, community programs or organizations that he's involved in. Um, has some budgeting experience that he's helped the current management with. And, um, yeah, and he's super excited about coming to the community, so.
And there was a, that was the personnel group plus the gentleman from...
Uh, yep, we had Paul, the executive director from the MMBA, come into the... Uh, yep, we had Paul, the executive director from the MMBA, come into the interviews with Michelle and Chris and I.
So this guy's moving to town then?
Yep.
To the area?
Yes.
Probably a good time to get out of the area since it's on fire. Um, Silver Bay, Silver, Silver Bay, not the smaller community too, so they have some, he's got, so he understands the potential limitations and things with a small town as far as, you know, okay.
Yep.
Yep, those were specifically talked to during the interview, so...
And did he give, uh, give the, like, he's offered the position? Obviously, it sounds like he's willing to accept it. How soon can he get started?
Um, it would have to be sometime after Labor Day. You know, he has to find housing and get things figured out, so...
And I believe you said he knows someone from the area?
He has a Realtor acquaintance, like, connection in Hutch, so...
So, and where does that, on the pay scale, where does that put him? I mean, how many steps are?
He will be starting at step five.
Okay.
Out of nine.
Basically the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
Second. I'm seconding her motion.
I forgot she made a motion.
No, I didn't think she'd made a motion.
She did.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. So I guess it'd be nice if you could, uh, come up with a time when he can start so we can get him to commit saying, okay, I'll work on my housing and I will hypothetically, I will start September 7th or whatever. Whatever it is, whatever it is, it is. Okay?
Nail them down.
Okay. Anything else for the liquor store? If not, we'll move on to community development.
Okay, I'm trying to find what page we're on here.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Okay, so we didn't have a lot to talk about, and I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I couldn't get back here quite in time. Um, wasn't a ton to talk about there. Um, here we are. You guys covered the planning commission vacancy, and we do have an application for a new commissioner. So we do have council action, request to approve appointing Amy Panaz for the planning commission vacancy spot. And I will make that motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I think she's gonna be a greater addition, that's it.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and so...
Yeah, I abstain.
See, now technically you don't have to because you don't financially...
No. Let's not get into that.
I will.
All right.
So, um, pool, the, this, now, here's a little discrepancy. It says the pool closes the 31st, not the 30th, so I...
So the email I received said August 31st.
Okay.
So, um, I will confirm that tomorrow, one way or another.
Is that a, what day, I mean?
So August 31st is a Tuesday, August 30th is a Monday, yeah.
Okay.
When's Labor Day?
Week later?
Like the 6th or whatever that is?
Yeah, the 6th.
Um, Jared got ahold of me about the grill in the park. It was rusted through and he's gonna be fixing one of the grills in the park. He's keeping an eye on that stuff. Um, I also spoke to Jared about those doors down in the park. The one that got hatcheted up or something over there by the concession, you know, and then the other one that's rusted through. So, I mean, the idea of replacing both of those, and he was gonna get some measurements on them for me because we, we were having a discussion at the same time about the grill, so I brought it up. Wasn't trying to cut you out. But I, I just brought it up to him at that time, and, um, one idea I thought was, um, also in that COVID money, it says that it could benefit tourism, which is something I guess that could. So that's a possible way to fund that and get some of those things down there at the park. There's also rickety old fence down there and things like that, so, I mean, that's an idea. Um, the pool season seems like it went well. Chris, I got me some numbers here. Thank you, Chris, I'm always on the ball. As far as season family passes, there were 68 purchased this year. And I don't know how that is compared to a regular year, but that seems pretty decent.
I would say it's up from 2019. I didn't look, see what's in.
Sixty, 68 family passes. There was, um, two additional family member passes bought on those. Um, for 10-day pool passes, seven were picked up and then eight individual, uh, season passes. And those are just the season passes, so the attendance, looks like it's been quite well. Totals for June, uh, $10,877. And July, I believe, did quite well too. Where was that one at?
Have they got, you got expenses there too?
No, a little bit, yeah, that was, yep. I mean, this is, that's with admissions, concessions, rentals, but that's what's coming in, the total. Deposits were, for July, was $7,356 and then $10,877, which, I mean, is pretty good because I...
Well, what's the expenses?
That's just the revenue report.
This is just the revenue.
So we don't have expenses?
No.
I didn't get, I didn't get our financial report.
Okay.
So, but I think that the pool has always kind of been right on the cusp of not making money or making money, hasn't it? Or has, has been a losing battle?
Never made money.
Never made money, so... I mean, it seems like it did pretty decent this year, so I think everybody was happy to get back to the pool after being locked down for a while, so, uh, seems like it went well, so... I'm planning on having a, a meeting with Gary and Charissa after they close down and to see if there's anything. And I'm also gonna let them know about the, uh, idea that potentially this COVID money could help them out in different directions. So maybe it's something to look at for them as well. That is about it.
Okay. That's it, we'll move on to admin.
All right. Um, July's treasurer's report is in your packets. Uh, we received half of our American Rescue Plan money for $43,067.53. And we will receive the other half a year from now. In your packet, there's guidelines from the US Treasury website that I've included for stipulations, what it can and can't be used on. And there will be an accounting meeting in October for city councils and townships to attend if you want to know more and for guidelines. There'll be a morning session and an evening session, so...
We're out.
Um, that I don't know yet.
Okay, you'll send us the information.
Yes, yep, yep. Thank you.
So it seems that, just reading through them, they left it open pretty wide to use the money for quite a bit of stuff to benefit the cities, you know?
And it probably will require, like, maybe a workshop, something to, like, brainstorm and kinda come up with a list of things that, so everybody can agree on something in the end. I mean, that's the ultimate result, so...
I think what we should do, the wise thing to do with that is to come up with a, come up with a game plan, almost like, um, oh, should I say it? We know the amount we're gonna get, so, okay. We have, right now, tell me if I'm wrong, as we sit here, there's nothing that's absolutely pressing. We have many needs, but there's nothing jumping out at it that's, oh, God, we gotta have that. So we should come up, give it some thought, saying, just kinda like what?
Yeah.
We could, we could, uh, a lot X amount towards, let's say, the pool, a lot X amount towards this, lots, we can, they can work within those parameters. And come up with a game plan, instead of just willy-nilly throwing the money around.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And so what I did is I set up a separate account in our fund accounting system just to track this money. So I received it, and then I'll, as we, as we use the money and expense it out, then I'll create codes, so it'll all be in one fund, so we can track it a little bit better too.
But what I'm getting at is, is, you know, like, well, we paid for that with this, we paid for that with this. Let's come up with a, call it a budget or whatever, how we're gonna use it.
Yep.
And we got, how long to use that? This?
Well, you have till 2023 or 24 to actually spend it all. So it doesn't have to be spent now, no. You can leave it sit and...
Well, no, there's no reason to, but I'm saying, even though we have that, we're not, there's no limit on the first half. We have to spend the first half by X.
No, there's no limit, no.
Okay.
No. Um, city clerk treasurer, second interviews will be tomorrow night. And then our special meeting will be at 8:00 tomorrow night.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
I thought it was seven o'clock.
Oh, yeah, no, eight o'clock.
Did you think it was 10?
I thought it was at seven o'clock.
Oh.
I posted it, um, on Friday, so we should be good there. And hopefully we can make a decision tomorrow night as to who our next city clerk and treasurer will be.
Good.
Um, so I'm on vacation next week, and August utility billing will need to be done at some point next week to keep up. And I'm wondering if we, I can do it early on the 23rd and have it done so that Roxy has something, or she can take care of it next week while I'm gone and get them out in the mail. They're due August 25th, so we'll just be reading them two days early.
I would say that sounds like a way.
Is that okay? And then not apply penalty fees because we're doing it two days early? Okay, we're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right? And then Roxy will be covering the city office while I'm on vacation. Um, Tuesday through Thursday next week, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM will be the city office hours, and it'll be closed on Friday, and then...
Tuesday to Thursday, I'm writing this, Tuesday to Thursday, you said?
Yeah, 10 to 3.
Okay.
And then Friday closed, and then that following Monday, it'll be 10 to 3 again. And I'll post the hours outside the city office too.
Okay.
One thing I did forget to cover, Bruce, if you'd allow me to jump back for just a second. We did speak about the economic development, the EDA fund at a, at one of the meetings, and Chris, it did get us the bylaws. One thing that it doesn't really specify though is what exactly it can be used for. There's no, you know what I mean? If there's more specifics, I don't know how we would get them, but reading through the bylaws, it doesn't really give us guidelines on exactly how to use it. It just, more or less, the bylaws get, um, on how we have to, um... Basically, it sounds like we have to come up with a, uh, a new, what's the word I'm looking for? A, a new group of people, um, because you can't just, you have to elect people for this thing.
This is the EDA group, right here.
No, it says in the bylaws, something about an elected board or something.
When did they change it because?
That's what I printed off the computer.
This is an elected board, we elected?
No, I...
Well, you have to elect a separate, specific board in order to do this properly, so we don't get ourselves in trouble. You have to have a vice president and a president and treasurer. There's a, you have to, to do this properly, you have to have a whole new board.
Well, it can be, there has to be meetings. It can be the same people.
Yeah, like your planning commission or?
You need to say president, vice president, treasurer.
Right, that's what, that's all, that's the way we did it before.
Yeah, but it does have to be set up that way, and then you have to hold regular meetings. You have to have an annual meeting and you have to have, there's certain things that you need to do to not get yourself in trouble.
Because when we did this years ago, that's, we just made it part of a meeting.
Okay. But I think specifically you've gotta name people. So, Chris, uh, Bruce, you guys are... You have nothing on your plate, right?
No. That's no big deal, because when we did it before, it was no, it's, it took 15 minutes of the...
Yeah.
Okay? I'm sorry, were you?
I just have one more thing. Um, Ty from Inspect was in this morning, and he will be attending the council meeting next month for a Inspect update or questions that you may have.
Okay. So, uh, there's some of these things in here that, uh, we should cover. It must be part of somebody's report.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, the, uh...
It's new business, isn't it?
Nope, sorry.
Okay.
The SafeAssure contract is...
I guess you're right, it would be the, yeah, the SafeAssure one is what I was looking at.
Yeah, the SafeAssure contract is due, and I just need approval for that invoice to pay.
I think Dale has always said that's a good thing.
That is the best training that we've received since we started contracting.
Okay.
Excellent.
Someone can make their motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice for SafeAssure consultants for $27,557.9.
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
How does that, um, has it increased at all? I'm assuming slightly, no, or is it staying the same as it was before? I can't remember what the...
I...
I think ballpark, I remember it being in that area.
Yeah.
23 maybe before. Just, just wondering if it, okay, that's it.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to old business, property curb cuts. As you can see, if you look, if you read through it, we actually, our ordinance has that aligned.
Yeah, so I, and I talked through that, and it doesn't actually cover, see, and this is why I brought it up. It doesn't cover that the, that the curb is the homeowner's responsibility, which I think we would run into problems with. And I did speak to, um, S E H, to John Rodeberg about it, and I asked him, in his experience, because I've never heard of such a thing, his experience, if he is aware of it being in our ordinance or any other cities where they have the, the curb be the homeowner's responsibility. He said he's, that's not typically the case. He said typically the, the curb is part of the roadway and is typically part of the, the public, the public util, you know, the public works deal. So it's not, it wouldn't be a homeowner responsibility. That being said, um, it does say in the, in the ordinance that people need to get a permit. And the authorizing party, which would be Dale, needs to, um, they need to get a permit when they do this. And then somebody needs to be inspecting it. And the issue that I have is, is there is no written standard procedures for fixing these. It just, I mean, they can say, hey, we're gonna cut this. Dale says, yeah, okay, I approve it, but you gotta get a permit, but there's no written standard procedures. We're hacking open a piece of the roadway. I mean, you, you, you cause issues there and you've got water flowing on that thing. The curb is, is an essential part of that roadway. You start weakening around that and you're gonna start losing the road, and that is the case in places around town. I, I think that there needs to be, if that's something, and I know it has been allowed in the past, doesn't, doesn't mean that it was wrong, but it also doesn't mean it was right. But I think that there should be some sort of written standard procedures going forward about what is gonna be required when, if people are gonna be allowed to cut, because everybody's responsible for that piece of road, every taxpayer in town is. You can't just have Joe, you know, Joe Schmo cutting it open, and then if they don't quite fix it properly, then everybody else in town has to pay for that, that's...
Isn't that, isn't that where a public works person with a professional experience can say if it's done right or not done right?
It's part of the roadway, though, there's standard procedures for these kind of things typically. I mean, Dale, you're not a concrete guy, right? You know, there's, there are building codes, there are, there are, there's, there's ways that typically they're required to be repaired. And if you don't have a standard procedure, then they can just fix it any way they want or, you know?
So I had a meeting with S E, S E H and the city attorney, um, on this topic last week. And what the outcome of the meeting was is that there needs to be some criteria and guidelines for property owners to follow, a checklist of some sort, um, a permit that, you know, there's a fee involved. And then the planning commission has the final say as to if they're going to approve it or not. Um, I reached out to the city of Glencoe, and theirs is pretty vague. They allow it, but the city, um, public works will actually go and cut the curb out for the resident. You know, so a little more research and we could come up with some kind of checklist or some, some guidelines that homeowners need to follow.
I think that's imperative personally, because if you don't have any guidelines, then there's, there's nothing to go back on. They could just...
No rules.
No rules, they could just say, well, Dale said it was fine, and, and, you know what I mean? It's, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, I'm seriously not. But if you have somebody cutting a, a piece of a roadway that typically, or technically belongs to everybody in this town, there needs to be some sort of standard procedures on how you do it. And I think that the engineer and the attorney both agreed, yeah?
What's, what's been the past experience on your end, Dale, with any bumps in the road or whatever?
Um, yes, thank you.
Yep.
If it's put in properly and set back a little bit, you know, from the outside of the curb, it seems like it drops in the curb and comes, comes right out. You know, I don't see it spraying way into the roadway and creating ice unless you get ice down in front of it in the wintertime.
Are we, okay, let me ask you this, are we talking a curb cut for a sump pump? Or are we talking a curb cut that somebody's gonna replace the curb cut, let's say, for a driveway? There's two different animals we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm understanding as for a sump.
I'm, I'm specifically addressing sump pumps, but I think that if you're, if you're cutting a curb and there, again, it's a piece of the roadway and everybody's gotta pay for that roadway, not just the one homeowner. I think that, um, we owe it to every taxpayer in this town to have some standards on how it gets put back. I just, I think that's, you know, everybody's paying for that effect if it causes the road to go bad. And, and, and five years down the road, when the road is already washing out, things of that nature, it's already too late, you know? So, I...
But I guess the flip side that I'm saying is, if you make it too difficult that somebody's gonna go through a curb cut, they'll dump that water right behind the curb and you got something worse.
Don't allow it then.
Well, what, okay, dump it five feet away, that's where it's gonna run. I mean, I'm just trying to make it user-friendly is all I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean...
Although you got a good point, Josh, that's not what I'm saying, but I wanna make it user-friendly and sort of do it.
I, I just think that there needs to be, there needs to be written standards on it. I mean, there's, it's, it's everybody's road, you know? So just, there has to be standards in my opinion, and I think that's how most places operate.
So ultimately, who was, are you saying owns the curb and gutter?
The, the curb and gutter is part of the roadway. That's, that's, it's not part of the, that is absolutely 100% part of the roadway, it's...
So it's part of the roadway, then, when we do the project, nobody has to pay anything for the curb?
No, they only cover the curb above it, just like they don't cover sidewalks, they cover the curb above a utility, just like they only cover the roadway above a utility.
We got a guy down on the corner, we can stop the boat tonight.
That's why I'm bringing that up. Yep, yep, that's why I'm bringing that up.
He's got a hundred and some feet of curb in front of his house that's junk, and we told him he has to pay for it.
I think you're turning it on.
A hundred feet, it's completely junk, it's shot. It's like this, it's like this, it's like this, and we told him he has to pay for it.
He doesn't have to pay for it if he doesn't wanna do the project. If he does, that's his choice. If you guys allow him to replace a part of the roadway, that's still a part of the roadway.
Well, yeah, he asked if we would pay, because it's the city curb. It's no good, it's holding water, it's destroying the street and his driveway.
What caused the...
Settlement. Settlement, old age. When was that? Low line, low line area.
But what caused it to settle there and not down the road? You know what I mean?
Well, it ain't good anywhere down in there.
So in other words, hypothetical, Dale, you're plowing, and you hook a ch, a ten-foot chunk of curb and rip it out of the ground. Homeowner doesn't pay for that?
No, we do.
And simply because it was accident because of that?
I mean, as far as the curb, and as far as with the one you guys are talking about, no. If he, if he chooses to replace it because he wants to do it for his driveway, but there, again, we've let other chunks of curb and things like that sit for, for a couple of decades, and it wasn't replaced because the money wasn't there or the project wasn't planned, it just isn't what it is.
Right.
You know what I mean? Just because he wants to put in a driveway right now doesn't mean the city necessarily has the opportunity to address it right now or the finances to address it right now. And obviously, that's been the case in other places in town, and we have to admit that. You know what I mean? So he's making the choice to replace this because he wants to put in a driveway right now.
I'm, I'm just looking, you can tell him not to put a curb stop, you know, hold him back, but yet he has, he can't get good curb and gutter in his house. I, maybe I ain't saying that right, but...
I guess, I guess I got a different, although I'm talking about curb. The, oh, there, there's no actual curb out, there's a washway there, but there's no actual regular curb like you see on the street.
Yeah, goes past, it goes past his.
No, 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 I'm talking out on Century.
Oh, Century, that's a model curb.
That's just a driveover.
That's a driveover.
Yeah.
It's all driveover.
Which you're starting to see more and more.
That's what I'm saying, I'm seeing a lot of that.
Nobody puts high back curb anymore, really. For one, it gets beat up with the plow so bad, and then you can put a driveway anywhere you want.
When you're, when they decide to cut it down on streets, if you have a lot of parking for an event or something, they can park up over on a person's lawn a little bit.
So, we're getting off track here, where I guess the first thing we're talking about, how do we get, if, if it's very important to the council to get the guidelines, where do we get the guidelines so we can put them in place?
Who writes those?
I think we could probably piggyback off other towns.
Yeah.
I know there are people that, that, you know what I mean, they require things to be put back a specific way, because if it does falter, then everybody's gotta pay for that road just because one person fixed it. And I, like I said, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but there just needs to be standards when we're affecting a roadway.
I thought you said that it wasn't very common, though, so are we only gonna be working off of, like, three examples?
No, no, it's, it's not very common to not have standards.
Okay, okay, I see.
And, and the other thing, too, is I don't know how often people are getting permits for these, but it does say in the ordinance that you need to get a permit. So I, I guess we'd have to make sure that that's happening as well, because that is right in the ordinance.
But a permit necessarily, I'm just saying, doesn't necessarily have to cost money.
It just has to be on file, that somebody did it.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. That has been, was requested and inspected.
Does it? Wouldn't Minspect have something to say about that, if it doesn't cut anything?
No, it's streets. Because there's no quote-unquote building code for them, there's...
Okay.
So, you know what I'm saying? Because if somebody's doing it and there's not standards, let's just say they go plop it back over. You know, if, if they don't get it sealed right, or they use three thousand pound concrete as opposed to five thousand pound concrete, and it cracks, and it comes out of there, and it gets caught with the plow in the wintertime, and then all of a sudden, we're repa, replacing that.
Are there different kinds of concrete?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yep. You know, so, I mean, and let's say they don't get it sealed, let's say they don't throw a little piece of rebar over it to hold it in place, it's just sitting there. I'm just saying that there needs to be standards, and I, I don't, I guess any situations I've dealt with, there, there has been standards in other towns.
Do they take the whole thing out, or do they cut it off?
Need for what people have been typically doing?
Yeah.
Cutting a cross-section out.
Dot the top part?
Yeah.
They don't even get into the part that's holding the street?
They don't get into the gutter, just the high back.
Yeah.
And put a PVC pipe, flush it, and just fill it in.
Okay, so it's just getting the...
And that's, a lot of times, it's the older parts of town, because in the newer part of town, we're making them all hook into the drain tile that's behind the curb. Okay. I had a few come and call, I'm gonna cut my curb, and I go, you got drain tile behind, that's where you hook into. They didn't even realize it.
So Dale, can you try to get some specs on this?
I'll, I'm gonna give Minnesota River Water a call and step out to the...
Keep moving here. Okay. We good on that? Come back with the next one?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, the next order, new business, one nineteen Grove Avenue Northeast Utility Bill.
What page is that on?
Yep.
That's, uh, which page is that one?
It's in the email, email, that first email.
Yeah, I know, I read it.
Yeah, your attachments.
Thanks for coming. All right, so give us some history here, what's the issue?
Uh, there's, uh, was a toilet underneath my stairs in my basement, and then the seal in the tank in the back went out, and I, you couldn't hear anything, and then I lost water pressure in my house, and I tried to figure it all out, and then one day it was silent, and I could finally hear running water. I thought the water was originally shut off to that house since I, or to that toilet since I bought it, so. There I went. I don't know, ten days, no, a little, or under two weeks of constant water running in my house.
Lot of water.
Seven thousand gallons a day. It's a semi-load a day.
I bet that, uh, that bill kinda gave you a hard catch.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering if I can have time to pay with no late fees, or if there's something to work out.
What are you proposing? What would you...
I have no idea, I don't even know where to start to propose something.
Well, I, I'm thinking that you did things just as we would recommend that you do, you know, you, you find a leak, you take care of it right away, you notice it right away, so, um, I move that we forgive the bill. This is not his fault.
Is there, I guess, is that a motion?
I guess that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Um, I would say we go with the precedent that we've already set of paying...
No, I'm just gonna ask if there's a second or hers.
No, no, all right, no.
Okay, is there a second? Call for it one more time, is there a second? Okay, if not, motion failed. Okay, Michelle, you're up.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say we would go with the precedent that we have previously set with the last two times we've dealt with a, um, water bill, an exorbitant water bill, um, which was paying a partial of it. And he kind of brought up the idea of forgiveness of late fees or something like that.
Be fully forgiven or anything, it is my mistake, it is my house.
We're having that conversation.
I, I do know we had one very similar to this, awful similar to this, about three years ago. And what that was, was set up a payment plan, and spread it out over time where someone could handle it. I don't know if we've ever done this for a resident, what you're saying, have we?
No, because it was the church and then...
Nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah, and then a business.
Well, yeah, it was a business, and we paid for it. Are we covered or forgave half, didn't we?
We gave the sewer.
Half of the sewer.
Down the sewer. Because it didn't go in the sewer. Down the sewer, and went to our plant, and we had to process it.
Gotcha.
Little different, you know?
If you were to set up a payment plan, what works for you?
Uh, that probably, probably has to be like three, four hundred bucks a month to make it done in a couple of years, or by the end of the year at least, so I don't have to drag it on in my own life.
Right. Because normally, your bill is how much? No, average?
Eighty-something.
Eighty to a hundred and twenty, depends.
Say a hundred, say a hundred.
How much was his total?
Total bill?
Twenty-one.
Two thousand sixty-six, sixty-seven. I guess it's twenty-one fifty-nine.
Well, if you divided two grand by twelve, you got one sixty-six.
Yeah, on top of what I...
Yeah, so you'd be at two forty.
Two, three, yeah.
And if you did eighteen months, you'd be at one eleven, plus your eighty, you'd be under two hundred for a year and a half. Just throwing numbers at you, what feels comfortable for, you know, two grand at twenty-four months is eighty-three, plus your bill would be a hundred and seventy a month.
Well, why don't you say how much more extra you can, you could pay a month? What do you feel comfortable with? We're here to work with you.
Hundred, two hundred maybe?
You wanna just...
Yeah.
Extra?
Yeah.
Like your regular bill plus a hundred?
Yeah, but...
Until it's done?
Do you want, I'm just asking the question, do you want it hanging over your head for twenty months?
No, I don't, that's why I'm trying to come here and see what we can work out, type of thing, but it's just what it has to be.
I'm saying make a proposal and let us propose bad.
I don't want you to hurt everybody. If you can only afford eighty extra, just say that, you know?
Well, no, it also depends on how much sidewalk I get a month. Off of my regular, regular forty hours, maybe a hundred bucks, but that's not what I always work.
Maybe you propose that you can add an extra eighty a month, and if you can pay extra of that month, you can always give a...
Well, they gotta set up a payment plan.
You can make two payments in one month, can't you?
They have a payment plan, and he might besides to pay more, that's fine.
I understand that.
So, you, if I'm reading this right, you caught it in about two weeks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, it wasn't going for, I mean, we had one that went for a month and a half, so obviously, you're paying attention, and we're responsible with it, and...
But it is amazing, when you think about it, how much toilet can push through.
Oh, I didn't think how much water could flow through that.
Why did you think it wasn't connected?
Because, uh, when I first bought the house, it, like, the bottom bowl was dry. It's always been dry. But then that, that seal in the back of the tank went out, so it's al, it is continuously just filling and running.
Hmm. Um, so will the late fees continue to accrue?
Well, that's what you guys will have to vote on. We can waive penalty fees as long as a payment is made every month.
God, I don't...
Can you handle a hundred and fifty dollars a month, extra?
Try it.
Um, well, you said on your regular salary, though, it's, it'd be about a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I mean, I pay what I pay, you're right, I can't pay what if you guys set a, a minimum.
Yeah, because I want to set it at a practical level, so that you can at least make those, and then if you can make the extras.
Maybe, maybe what you should do is just do a hundred dollars a month, but if you, one month paid three hundred bucks, you still have to make a payment every month. The next month, you have to make a hundred dollars.
Just like a car payment.
Exactly.
Yep, okay. So then I, um, boy, how do I even... So I make a motion to, um, set, to start a payment plan for the owner of one nineteen Grove Avenue Northeast, at a hundred dollars a month, and, um, forgive late fees as long as payments...
For the full amount?
Until the full amount is paid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just so we're clear on this, there's no late fees on this, I'm just gonna say it, if you skip your water bill, there will be wait, late fees on that.
Yeah.
Okay, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right, don't we agree? This is, this is a separate little issue, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, late fees on this bill.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And we thank you for coming.
So, I have to pay this whole month, do you guys give a business half to pay back?
We didn't give them half. We dropped the sewer charge because it was a sprinkler that they ran. It wasn't water in the sewer. We didn't charge them sewer fees. We charged them for all the water they used, but none of the sewer. But all your water went down the sewer, therefore, our sewer plant still processed it.
It's clean and water.
Doesn't matter, water going in there has to go through the plant and be processed. Little different scenario.
Okay. Move on to David Broll.
This is the button.
Push that button.
There you go.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Questions you have, um, too many, everybody has a, do you have a copy of the platte or not, or, or the past one?
This is the Century Lane.
Uh, yes.
Willow and...
William, I think it is.
Noble, William, yeah.
It may have got changed a couple of times, William and Noble Street.
Yes.
And actually, more, what started this actually was the corner lot on the corner of ninety-two and seven. So I've had some inquiries as far as residential for that lot. It's in the country, of course, as of right now, and so it had my surveyor draft kind of work on it. And he said we'd get four lots in there.
So is this, this isn't, this is in the country yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Never was in next, you know?
Yep, it's still in the country. And so, my main point, point tonight was to look at those four lots, so that's, that's the main purpose. And then, as I was thinking through this process, is I just wanted to kind of get an idea of your, the fifteen acres or thereabout to the south of that, um, you know, I'm looking at maybe doing some things there, too. I would revise that, because back then, it was mainly single-family homes, split levels, full basements, all that. We're seeing more and more in the marketplace, slab on grade and things like that coming into the, the picture. Maybe some twin homes or townhomes as well, but it will be residential. But for tonight, more than ever, would be that, um, corner piece. Because I think at the beginning stage here, back in early two thousand, or whenever it was, we were looking at maybe that being commercial. And it just seems like it, as I talk to people in commercial, it lends itself better to go residential. And it's kind of laid out in a way that slab on grade would work fairly well there. So I want to get your thoughts on that.
I'd personally like to see it developed rather than sit there as a field. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Personally, I'd like to see it annexed into the city and used.
Sure, yeah. I think the water and sewer line goes right, I think there's a water line that's a loop in there. So I think that's already in place when I talked to John Rodeberg, but he wasn't with SEH at that time. But I did find some old plans dated back in about oh-three that shows that the water and sewer and stuff is already going past the street. And it looks like the pipe that you'd connect into, like, the, the, um, sump pump is already there behind the curb as well. So I think we probably have to go into the street. There's a manhole and all that's in the street and all that, that's all there. But the eight-inch water main is there, and the four-inch drain pipe is there. Looks like the sanitary, sanitary sewer is already there to the manhole, so a lot of that's there.
So obviously, you'd have to cut the street four times, and because it's not stoked out for water or sewer.
I think so, unless John Rodeberg, your engineer, would have some other ideas on it. I would go in their direction, but that's kind of what I'm thinking right now, at this point.
Would we, this might be a silly question, would we have to move our Silver Lake sign?
No.
No, you're in the right way, I believe.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, I think you're fine there.
Because I think that's right behind Windlecks there.
Yep, that's right. This land is just to the, just to Windlecks.
Okay.
So mainly tonight, I want to have a good look on what that process would be to get those four lots going. I do have somebody that's showing some interest, and I don't know what that process would be within the city to move that forward, because they're kind of waiting on that piece, or otherwise, they will, they're also considering Billy and Hutch, but they would consider here.
We have to start the annexation process.
Yep, and I just don't remember, Bruce, that whole, that whole process and what that looks like. If I can give them some timeframe, or maybe at some point, someone can get back to me on timeframe and what's that process. Most likely, we would have to talk to, um, the county, or the township, I should say. Yep. But tonight, I wanted to get your feelings as far as that piece, moving that forward, and then, um, and then the other one as, as well.
So as far as, I'm, I'm ignorant to the annexation process whatsoever, so as far as... So, as far as, I'm ignorant to the annexation process whatsoever, so as far as the, the township and it being annexed into the cities, what, what sort of an exchange is there between the township and the city if that were something that's happened, is there, I mean, there, as, as far as, they're getting tax revenue from it right now?
Basically, there's nothing, they basically have to agree to give it up. And I, and I imagine, well, David, you know better than anybody, they, on that little chunk of land, they can't be getting a whole lot of taxes, because it's, is it considered agricultural now yet?
I think it is, yeah, yeah, I'm sure it is.
Sure it is, you're cutting hay on it, right?
Well.
So, if it were to get annexed into the city.
Yeah, it'd be egg.
It, it could be immediately zoned the way the city wanted it zoned, correct, it wouldn't have to be, I mean, right? If you annexed it in, you could automatically say residential, you would.
Oh, yeah. 'Cause this, the bigger part is all, uh, township too.
Oh, it is?
Right, the fifteen acres, so if you wanna pass this, you can kinda see where the yellow is, you can pass it around.
Yeah, I'm familiar, very. Yeah, I want that all the time.
Okay, and then I guess, you know, right now, it was, it's proposed from the surveyor that the lots would be around the seventy, the frontage is seventy, if you wanna pass this, I know I emailed it over, but take a look and.
It's nicer to see it.
Mm-hmm. Retention pond, and you know, that's already there, in place, at some point, um, well, let's stay with the four lots first, so we can talk a little about the fifteen lots.
Yeah, so, I'm looking for that, so these are, I mean, these are definitely smaller than what the previous lots are on that line, correct?
Jesus, I go.
On that, if you then, then think of the north side of Century.
You know, that could be, yeah, 'cause those are eighty, I think, seventy-three, some seventies.
Yeah.
So, I do see seventy.
Okay, and you were thinking the slab on grade, like patio homes for the four.
I, I think so, that's what I'm thinking right now, would make sense there.
So, as far as, and I know that you're just throwing ideas out right now, so you probably haven't gone too far, as far as developing that and slab on grade and things, um, and there being any drainage issues.
You know, the land, the lay of the land, I had my project manager drive by, and he just seems like that would make sense, and when I went by it, it did.
Because you have, as far as drainage and, and, and what the city's responsibility, that you have a county road on one side and a state road on the other, as far, you know what I mean, as far as where you would go for drainage or swale or anything like that.
But, I mean, when, to the south of that, we had that same scenario, you know, I think that lot had drains to the south there alongside the number ninety-two there.
Yep.
And that seems to work out really well.
I mean, if you're just looking tonight for whether or not everybody's receptive on it, I can tell you that I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my main thoughts.
Absolutely, who, who goes about the annex process, us or him? I suppose us, 'cause we want that property.
Right.
Yeah.
The first step is the city to annex it in, and then the, the next step is.
I have that too.
Plotted out.
And, and, okay, so let's say the city goes through with the whole annex process, annexation process, and then there's somewhat of a reneg on your part, you say, well, I'm not gonna develop, now, what does that mean for the city as far as, I mean, it's.
It's in the city, then.
Now, he's paying taxes on it, no matter what.
Right.
And I don't know if you remember, Bruce, back then, there was, there is an agreement with the city for some of the infrastructure costs, now, maybe that won't be affected so much on the four lots, I'd have to look at that, but there is an agreement that the city paid a certain portion.
Yeah, what was it, I'm trying to think.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure we can find it.
Yeah, you have it, otherwise.
Well, but still, still, that's the agreement on that, and I know, this is a whole new ballgame.
No, it was for the whole development.
Well, but this is annexing it in.
Yeah, but it was for the whole development at that time, 'cause I made sure that we agreed that, once this goes, we go to the next phase, the next phase, the next phase, like, like when we did the first seventeen lots, that was that phase, and then we went to second addition.
We gotta redo the whole, we did it, and we agreed to the same thing.
Yep, and then it went to the next.
Right.
Piece.
I would think that that would definitely have to be something the attorneys would have to review, though, because it would be hard for the city to make an agreement on something that isn't even annexed in yet, isn't, wouldn't it?
Well, we did, you know, we knew there were phases, and when I did it, I wanted to make sure that if I start the project, that we would go through phase after phase, so that's one of the reasons why we went ahead and, you know, kinda gave a preliminary.
Right.
And then, um, I believe there's around two, three acres there that becomes a city, city park at some point as well, that was.
Was there even sidewalks going around that whole thing too?
I don't think there was.
I think there was.
Yeah, I don't recall sidewalks, if it was, it might have been from the main to the.
I thought it was following ninety-two.
Yeah, it might have been, um.
Is it?
Maybe, it, it, was it the whole thing, or was it just to the park? I just don't.
Think it might have been to the park.
Would it be that line there?
I don't know. And honestly, I couldn't tell you.
It's just a dotted line.
So, when you say a certain percentage, do you remember what that percentage was?
Yeah, I could look at what it was on the first.
You're, you're talking about the main utilities, you're not talking about the, the laterals to the homes, or, or, or are you talking about all of them?
Well, when we did water and sewer, the sack and rack fees, I think you guys forgave that.
The fees, but the city didn't pay to put or bring them in.
I, I couldn't tell you, I don't think so, but I couldn't tell you without, you know.
I think certainly, we'd have to get that agreement in front of all of us and take a look, and have the attorney take a look, 'cause this is a whole new group.
Yep, so, for example, site grading, um, drainage, erosion control, looks like developer, hundred percent, lift station, forest main, I think you guys put that in, sixty percent developer, forty city, sewer, uh, sewer, sewer mains, hundred percent developer, uh, water main loop, I think you guys already did that, hundred percent the city, water main subdivision.
You're saying no deal?
It ends on East Main there, on Main Two.
I don't know if it does deal, does it, I was just looking at the construction costs, and I thought we had a.
There's a loop that comes by the fork axes now.
I don't know, I just seems like, to me, I, I mean, gosh, it's twenty years ago, guys, almost, seems like there was a loop that came back, and you guys needed that in order for the water to, to, um.
That ice right there, actually, it's your property, there's no lines going from eighty-seven back, or going around ninety.
Okay, yeah, so.
Well, I know there's none going around ninety-two, we never did anything there.
Um, so, anyway, I can get you that, um, sewer, yeah, storm sewer, phase one, phase two, all the way through, um, ponding.
What, what, when you got there, storm sewer, phase one and phase two, I didn't think it got into phase to this fifteen acres, though.
Uh, yeah.
I don't think so.
Have your attorney look at it, Bruce.
Right. But I guess we should zoom in on that corner one.
Yeah.
That's the one you're, for right now, I mean, it's.
It is, yeah, it is.
So, obviously, then, yeah, me personally, definitely receptive, but that's something we gotta see, obviously, is there, is there other financial obligations tied to this one as far as sewer than when we were talking about the laterals and whatnot, so.
Mm-hmm.
That it'd be, um, nice to see the old agreement and have the attorney review it and see what that means, um, as far as what the financial obligations would be.
Mm-hmm. So, tonight, yeah, that would be the main thing, and then, uh, get you guys' thoughts, and then we go from there, we should have an attorney take a look at that as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
We should dig out the, the whole process on the. Well, you don't have to go, the whole process should have been, uh, Dollar General was annexed in too, you don't have to go back too far to whole, just to find the process. And actually, you know, all that stuff, Cedar Crest was all annexed in, everything, so, we got records on all this.
Call John.
John didn't have anything to do with it either?
He wasn't, yeah, he probably wasn't there.
I'm sure we can find it somewhere, I'll.
John would be more on the engineering side.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that's our first step, so, I don't know how much, I don't know how fast you can turn that around, that's not real quick, for some reason.
I don't know either, you know, it may, it could be that, you know, the potential buyer has to figure on building next spring, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be my question, are they, are they patient, or?
We'll find out, you know, it has to do with cost and all that stuff, right?
Yep.
That one on that angle, that corner one, that's kind of a tight lot, though, isn't it, that pie-shaped one?
You know, these are pretty deep, they're, they're pretty deep lots, boys.
They are.
Your standard lot is like a hundred and thirty-six, you're probably looking at a hundred and eighty-six, depth-wise, so it may look like it's pie-shaped and there isn't much, but when you start looking at a hundred and eighty-six versus a hundred and thirty, it's a, quite a bit, just much longer than a typical lot is.
So, you're saying that lot, what's that Lot Ten right across the street, what's the width of that one? Is that really what it says?
Well, it looks, yeah, it doesn't show on my sheet here, but it's probably somewhere between seventy-five and eighty-eight.
Lot Ten.
Yeah, Lot Ten is, I don't know what I'm reading there, but.
Fifty-six point forty-five.
Yeah, but then there's C eleven, so you gotta add that to it.
Eleven's eighty.
Yeah, but you gotta see, you gotta, now, C means the letter C, so, so that, there's, that's just to that certain portion, then there's the next portion to it, so that would be from there to there, and then you get from here to here to get there. So, I'm gonna guesstimate you're closer to eighty than you are to fifty-six. And if you look at, you know, I believe all the way through, there's some I see here that are, um, I don't know, one, I don't know if that.
Do you have any of these, Dave, on the corner as you go in?
Seventy.
As you're go, coming in from County Road ninety-two, that, you know, 'cause we're looking at a curve, if you're going the other way on the left side, is there any pie-shaped ones like that in there, you know, the opposite, as you're going like, before you get to your.
See if that helps you.
Is there what that road that's partially cut in to, back to the fifteen acres, is there a pie shape there at all?
That's my little general there, Bruce.
That's where that half stuff street is, the only pie one, there's a pie there, a pie there, and then Darrell, Darrell's curve is all pies. But that's a square.
So, this is probably pretty similar to the one that's, that they're building on right now.
Yeah. I bet you're right.
Is it back up to seven?
Number fifteen.
Yeah, the one right on the corner, next to Darrell's, that's, it's kind of about the same pie-shaped one.
Fifteen.
You know, similar, but maybe not the same, but.
This one's, this one's wider at the street than by Darrell's, Darrell's is narrow by the street, and this one's wide at the street.
Yeah.
All right.
So, if you guys could check on maybe the process, and maybe get me some timeframes?
That would help.
Definitely.
Did you wanna, do we want him to come back next month, or just?
Yes, that's the other question, as soon as you guys get it, I'd be willing to do some special meetings, just to kinda figure out where we're at.
Yeah, let's.
If that's possible.
Well, it won't be next week.
You got that Cana, Cana, Canadian fishing trip.
There won't be anybody in the office next week.
Okay, got it.
So, that's our main objective there, so, very briefly, so what are you thinking on that, I mean, what are you, we have a lot of stuff going on in the city with this infrastructure, what are you thinking on that fifteen acres, in your mind, like, what's kind of a timeframe are you thinking?
I'm not in a hurry on that one.
Okay.
You know, I really, I'm not, I guess I just wanted to bring it up, because I wanted to go back twenty years when we started this process, or twenty-five, and said, okay, let's at least bring it on the table and get your take on it, and then we'll go from there. So, but the four, the four lots is something I would pull the trigger right away, 'cause I'd have to revise the plat and everything on that fifteen and a half acres, I mean, honestly, guys, in a small city, to have a hundred-foot lot, or a ninety-foot lot, it sounds great and dandy, but pretty hard to do a hundred-foot lots at the cost of lots and the cost of construction and be within a price point of the city.
Right.
Now, you're probably looking at, in Hutch, I, I, we've done sixty-five to seventy, two-foot lots, sixty-five and seventy all day long. So, you guys would have to, you know, think through that to make sure you're okay with that, and the other thing is, you know, maybe there's some twins that could be put in there, simply because I've been getting people that have asked about a twin home, town home, I mean, we could possibly, I've done several, several town home projects, my first project in ninety-five was twenty-four town homes in Silver, uh, in, um, Hutch, and then I did a fifteen, and then, now, we're, now we're doing some slab on grades, and that's worked out really well, too.
So, would you, I guess my thought on this thing is, is, you know, we got that William Street coming in there? I'm talking big picture here now, and, you know, big, big picture.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of like what you did, what you, the city did on those other ones in phases, you know, instead of trying to pull the whole fifteen acres.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean, maybe, maybe bring that William Street through and do one section of, something like that, phase that thing too.
Yeah.
For, so the council's got an idea here, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, I probably, I wouldn't pull the trigger on all of it, Bruce, I'd probably look at, you know, thinking out loud, maybe Noble Street, maybe, maybe revisit Noble Street and, and do some twins, townhomes.
Hmm.
You know, and whether it's gonna have an association or not, I'd have to think through that, just takes more manpower to manage that, but.
So, you're talking, bring William Street down a little bit, build Noble from there, but not complete William from there.
Well, maybe Noble up to, and loop it back to Century, up to William and back to Century, does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, and then we can start looking at the other phase from the east end, once that's done.
What did Dale, if you can, when, when we did this, was that lift station set up to handle it? A lot more?
It's a small, that's. I can't remember if that second bird was gonna be gravity coming down to Main Street.
Probably something that kinda.
At one time, the lift station had forty-three thousand put into it, so I don't know what, you know, I don't know, Dale.
There's just a little two, two horse pumps, uh, two horse power pumps in there.
Mm-hmm. And I think when we did the phase one, or just the first development, that was, I think, seventeen lots, and we had a cul-de-sac at the very end.
Mm-hmm.
It just kinda stayed there, and, I mean, we kinda put our foot in the water slowly, I mean, it was like, do we do asphalt road, or, I think at one time, you guys were even okay with gravel, but finally, it came to a point, said, we gotta, I gotta just do asphalt, and let's get it done, and we did, and it worked out well. But I would anticipate, maybe at the, at the end of Nobles, put a cul-de-sac, gravel cul-de-sac in there for turnaround for fire, I mean, if you loop it, you can, but there will be extra costs there, so I don't, just have to think that through a little bit, so.
How wide is, is that, is that street down there?
I think it's seventeen feet, if I remember right, Century is.
Seems awful narrow.
From face to face on concrete?
Curb to curb.
It's narrow.
Is it?
Yeah.
Curb to curb, I think it was.
Center line to the, to the face is usually eleven and a half feet on most streets.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet, yeah.
I don't think.
Thirty-three from center, thirty-three from center line to the back of the rightaway in most roads, but.
No, it's not sixty-six feet.
No, it is thirty.
Thirty-three seems right, seventeen to the center.
'Cause I was parked there the other day when there was that semi parked there, I was parked there in a car barely in the middle.
No, I'm just talking about from the center line to the back of the rightaways.
That ain't thirty-three, oh, to the rightaway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, from se, center line to the face of the curbs, right around eleven and a half feet.
Thirty-four, maybe, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, seventeen's pretty narrow.
Yeah, now that they say seventeen, I wouldn't, that worked, shows forty-eight, what I'm seeing here. Does that sound right, that's what it shows here, shows forty-eight on my, on the engineer plan.
What's like Queen?
Right, that's thirty-three, yeah. So, forty-eight makes sense.
Yep, okay, so we have to get the process figured out for annexation.
And I think it was seven, seven, seven and a half feet for the, the, um, setback. I think it was shorter than what I see in Hutch, I think it's ten. What's that?
Lights.
I remember.
I think there's, I wanna say there's.
I'm just thinking, it's a crazy question to ask, but I wonder who put the lighting in, did Excel put that in?
The lights I can think of are privately owned, I think.
No.
There's a couple of streetlights there.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Chris Meyer had one in his yard.
So, I mean, the city doesn't locate them when there's a locate going on, right? So, it'd be Excel's there, so, they're, they're lights.
So, going back to, guys, just go back to lift station forty-three thousand, and then there was twenty thousand for power, then there was another thirteen on Cleveland, it says Cleveland Lift Upgrade, and then generator for new lift station was fifteen, almost sixteen thousand, so you have to add all that up.
And that's how many years ago?
That would have been, uh, probably two thousand and three, if I remember right, that's what, I think this was dated. Yeah, July.